I want to welcome everyone to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting, November 5th, 2015. Councilmember Rick LaLance has our prayer and our pledge.
All right, feel bad with me. Lord, thank you so much for the blessings in our lives. Lord, we hope that you will show us when you give us invitations. And God, we hope that you will be with us tonight and help us guide our decisions. And, Lord, just lead us into a great weekend. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic which is safe, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would also ask that you keep the Bramble family in your prayers. Their son, Baylor, was hurt a week and a half ago at a football game in Warren County. So I think everyone's been keeping up with that. And we'll tell y'all, I had put a post under my mayor page, and there were 38,000 people who viewed that post in our community, which I thought was pretty cool. All right, we have no ceremonial items, except want to welcome Craig Tyndall officially to his first city council meeting as our city attorney.
Thank you, ma'am.
We're glad to have you here.
Honored to be here.
All right, we'll move into the consent agenda.
No questions, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Washington, Vice Mayor Young, Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move into third readings, and we'll consider for passage on third and final reading ordinance 15049, amending Chapter 12, Fire Prevention, Section 1230, regarding prohibited sales, use, and possession of fireworks.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Washington, Vice Mayor Young, Mayor McFarland.
Aye. And we'll move into first readings. Mr. LaLance, would this be first reading, or would we need to consider this for other business?
No, we could actually do this on first reading. The ordinance that you just passed on third reading dealt with the cakes. That was a type of firework that we were restricting. This first reading deals with the days where fireworks would be allowed to be shot under this proposed ordinance. Fireworks would be able to be used on July 3rd, 4th, and 5th, as well as December 31st and January 1st.
Okay. Do you have an ordinance in front of you, want to get any discussion on this ordinance? I will say, I brought this, but I don't need to pass it out. I went and researched the top 15 cities in Tennessee, and there are two cities, Murfreesboro and Smyrna, and those are the only two cities out of the top 15 in Tennessee that allow fireworks to be shot inside the city. So, you know, in my opinion, limiting the days is reasonable, but we have, in order, Memphis, Nashville, Knoxville, Chattanooga, Clarksville, Franklin, Jackson, Johnson City, Bartlett, Hendersonville, Kingsport, Collierville, and Cleveland all have fireworks illegal in the city. So, seems like it's a pretty good compromise.
There's no more discussion, I'll move for approval. Second.
Have a motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Washington, Vice Mayor Young, Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move into new business and consider for renewal and certificate of compliance for Mr. I'm sorry, for Mr. Impatell and Impatell at Georgetown Wine and Spirits at 1720 West Northfield Boulevard.
Mayor, this is an existing location, and every two years, the state requires them to come before us, and we do a background check, and this location has met the state's requirements and our requirements for us to submit it to them for their review at ABC. And I recommend approval.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Washington, Vice Mayor Young, Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 15R PH 54, adopted by the city council on September 17th, 2015, fixing the time to schedule public hearings to consider adoption of a plan of services, first, adoption of plan of services, second, annexation of approximately 60.62 acres, and third, zoning for approximately 58.7 acres along Compton Road, which is proposed to be annexed to the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, 2014-508, 2014-432. Noticees said public hearings were published in the October 19th issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Ballmer.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. Our first public hearing tonight is with regards to the annexation of a little over 60 acres along the south side of Compton Road. The next public hearing that we'll have on our agenda will be with regards to the zoning, but this first one will be with regards to the annexation. The subject property that was requested is 58.7 acres, and you'll notice there is an increase in the total annexation acreage, because that includes approximately 900 linear feet of Compton Road right-of-way in front of the subject property, as well as a Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department sanitary sewer pump station as well. The property, as I mentioned, is located on the south side of Compton Road, and it is directly to the east of the Reserve subdivision and the General's Run condominium development. The property was considered by the Planning Commission on January 7th of this year for annexation, and the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the annexation at that meeting. However, it is just now getting to the city council, because the applicants requested a delay in bringing the annexation to council, so that the zoning, which was initially deferred by the Planning Commission, could catch up to the annexation, and so that they could come to the city council at the same meeting. You'll notice that the subject property is contiguous with the city limits on its west side. The property has been petitioned for annexation by the property owner, and the property is within the city's urban growth boundary. One thing that I would call to your attention is, along the south side of the property, you notice that on the map in front of you, there is a 10-foot strip adjacent to the property to the south, and if we annexed the entire parcel, it would force those two parcels in the county, I'll hover my cursor over it, to be annexed. And we actually have received an annexation request for this parcel, but this parcel, we have not received an annexation petition. So, we have included that 10-foot strip in order for that parcel that I just pointed to would not be required to be annexed into the city limits. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions with regards to the annexation request, and, as I mentioned, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this annexation petition.
Matthew, can we pull that map back up for me, please? If, is the property that's colored over there to the east, does that mean it's annexed already?
Yes, sir. That area that's shaded is already in the city limits.
Okay, if the property that is where you see Mary Beth Court, but it's the big property that creep kind of dissects from corner to corner?
Yes.
If they requested annexation, would there be a way to do that? They'd be, we wouldn't be, yeah, that'd be okay, right? I mean, would we have to have another strip up the side, or would we need that?
Yeah, some of that property at the end of Mary Beth Court?
No, just the whole, yes, yes, the whole big piece, directly to the east of the 10-foot strip.
Yeah, that still would leave a gap, and so that would not necessitate any 10-foot strips. I'd say that probably would be unlikely to be annexed, just because you'd have to travel through so much of the county to get to that one parcel, but it still could be annexed without having to use any 10-foot strip.
Okay, I just want to make sure it wouldn't kind of box them in, the neighbors. Okay.
Then we have a public hearing now.
Okay, any questions? All right, we'll need to conduct a public hearing on the plan of services and annexation for approximately 60.62 acres along Compton Road. Well, when we open the public hearing, we ask those wishing to speak for the annexation or the plan of services to come speak, direct your comments to the council. If you are representing a group, we would ask that you keep your comments to five minutes. If you're speaking individually, if you'll keep your comments to three minutes, and direct all comments to the council. And we'll make a list of any questions, and we'll try to get all those answered at the end of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the annexation or the plan of services, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider for adoption Resolution 15R PH 54, to consider adoption of a plan of services for approximately 60.62 acres along Compton Road, 2014-508, Ms. Virginia Caballero applicant.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Washington, Vice Mayor Young, Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider for adoption Resolution 15RA 54, to annex approximately 60.62 acres along Compton Road, Ms. Virginia Caballero applicant.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Washington, Vice Mayor Young, Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now conduct a public hearing on zoning approximately 58.7 acres along Compton Road as a planned residential development district simultaneous with annexation, 2014-432. Mr. Ballmer.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Allow me just a moment to move my, advance my slide. Our second public hearing tonight is for the zoning of the same property to PRD, Planned Residential District, simultaneous with annexation. As I mentioned in my previous presentation, the original public hearing on both the annexation and the zoning was conducted by the Planning Commission on January 7th of this year. The annexation was recommended for approval. The zoning, however, was deferred at that time. Originally, the applicants came to the Planning Commission with a plan with a density of approximately 275 to 280 dwelling units, and there was much concern at that public hearing with regards to the density. And subsequently, after the deferral, the applicants revised their plan and came back on May 6th, and another public hearing was conducted before the Planning Commission after the applicants reduced the density to 250 dwelling units. The Planning Commission deferred once again, and the applicant came back, and the Planning Commission held another public hearing on September 2nd, after the applicant reduced the density to 181 dwelling units, and the Planning Commission recommended approval at its September 2nd meeting of the third iteration of the plan. So that is where we find ourselves today. The subject property is the 58.7 acres located along the south side of Compton Road. As I mentioned, it is directly adjacent to the Reserve subdivision, which borders the property on its west side. The Reserve is zoned RS12, single-family residential, with minimum lot sizes of 12,000 square feet. Also, to the west of the subject property is the General's Run Townhome Development, which is zoned PRD, Planned Residential District. To the north of the subject property are some county single-family residential lots located outside the city limits. Also, to the east of the subject property are some single-family residential lots located in the county. To the south of the subject property are several large tracks along Osborne Lane that are undeveloped or developed with a single-family residence. And to the southwest of the subject property is the Ridgeport subdivision, which is also zoned RS12. The applicant's development contains several different components: 12,000 square-foot lots, 8,000 square-foot lots, 6,000 square-foot lots, and a cottage product, which is, we would think of as a condominium-type unit, where the structure will be owned, but outside of the structure will all be common area. Mr. Matt Taylor, the applicant's representative, will be up in just a moment to make a PowerPoint presentation with regards to the details of the development. But as I mentioned, the applicants have decreased the density down to 3.08 dwelling units per acre, which is down by about 90 to 100 units from the original proposal back in January of this year. With that being said, I'd invite Mr. Taylor to come up and make his PowerPoint presentation.
Matt Taylor of SEC here in town, and I'm accompanied tonight by the applicant, Mr. Kevin Estes, and his partner, both of Green Trails LLC. And I do have a brief presentation for you over Valley Brook. As Mr. Blomley said, this property is located along the south side of Compton Lane, to the north of Osborne, and is to the east of the Reserve subdivision. It generally drains from west to east into Bear Branch, and then on to the north before it enters the Stones River. We have sewer, water, electric, all readily available to the site. The surrounding areas are all consistent with being single-family residential neighborhoods. And then you have the General's Run Townhouse project in our northwestern corner. Example, one of the houses in the Reserve, this is from the property itself, from the southwest corner looking toward the northeast. You can see it's mostly open pasture land with a small group and the trees kind of in the central part of the property. An example of what the General's Run Townhomes look like next door. This is toward the front of the property. That is the only existing structure on the property. It's an old barn. Plan itself, as Mr. Blomley said, is a mixture of attached and detached homes. There's 181 total on the 58.7 acres. 64 of those are the cottages, which are an attached, aged, targeted product. The other 117 are all single-family detached, own, fee-simple lots. Our roads here, everything where the single-family lots are, is public, be built to public standards, sidewalks on both sides of the street, street lighting. Inside of the cottage portion will be private streets and maintained by the HOA. All of our utilities here are going to be underground. We anticipate each phase to be...
That's an amber alert that just came across. Not anything to, it's actually an amber alert in St. Louis, Missouri.
Okay. We do anticipate for about three phases per, for the single family, and about three phases for the cottages. If approved, we anticipate for the project to start in the spring of 2016, after we get our approvals and permits in place. As I said, the 6,000, 8,000 square-foot lots, we've tried to design those so those are more central to the neighborhood, be more sensitive to the Reserve subdivision, with a lot of input early on in the process from the Reserve, and so we tried to mimic them and move these lots internal to the development. They're one- and two-story homes, a minimum of 1,800 square feet in size. All of them will have a two-car garage and a driveway out front, it's big enough for an additional four cars. All sotted front yards, good quality building materials. The front will be all brick or stone, the sides will be cement board siding. The only vinyl that we'll have here is in the trim and soffit areas, and that was at the request of the neighbors in one of our early neighborhood meetings. Here's an example of, you know, a lot of detail in the roof line, a lot of interest in that front facade there. The larger lots are set up really to mimic the Reserve. We have two lots deep coming in on our main road, one- and two-story homes again, these are a minimum of 2,200 square feet in size. We anticipate almost all of these to be side entry garages. If they are front entry, we've required them to be set back from the front of the house an additional 10 feet, for appearance sakes. And then, again, same sort of materials, brick, stone, cement board siding. These restrictions are very close, if not identical, to what the restrictions of the Reserve are. You can see, very nice-looking buildings, very attractive cottages themselves. They're all one-story homes. They will have two-car garages, minimum of 1,300 square feet in size, heavy landscaping throughout, and really consider kind of a rear entry garage with the front of these units facing away from the street. Building materials are, again, a mixture of brick, stone, cement board siding, and vinyl. We've limited the vinyl to 15% here. You see a very attractive facade. This would be what would face Compton and out toward the neighbors. And even the garage side, they're decorative garage doors. They'll be a muted color, not a stark white. They've all got the architectural character there, very attractive for a garage-sided entry. Amenities, the main physical structured amenity here will be a clubhouse accompanied by a pool. They'll also have an abundance of walking trails that are way down the floodplain and floodway areas along the stream and within our detention areas. An example of what the clubhouse would look like, kind of back-sitting patio area, and a walking trail. Access, our main point of access at this time is off of Compton. At that location, we have had a traffic study conducted, and the required improvements there would be a left and a right turn lane on Compton, identical basically to what you see going into the Reserve subdivision. We have planned for a connection into the Reserve. That was a stub street that was planned with Reserve master plan, and we're simply following through with that plan. With that, we have tried to add some curves and make that a very circuitous route, so as not to promote that for our residents going into the Reserve. It's more for an emergency exit, as you will. And then we've also planned for two future stubs to the south that would eventually connect back to Osborne Lane in some fashion. And then, all of our streets, like I said earlier, will comply with city standards, if they're a public street, and then still with some city standards on the private side to make sure that our emergency services can service that neighborhood. Landscaping, we've agreed to do berms and landscaping along Compton Road, and we pulled those units back about 80 feet from the right-of-way of Compton Road. That was at the request of the neighbors as we went through our neighborhood meetings, and then, of course, dressed up those front elevations. And then each individual unit will have heavy landscaping on the street side where the garage is, as well as on the front facade itself. And all that landscaping will be maintained by the HOA. Myself or the applicants will be happy to answer any questions that you might have now or after the public hearing.
Matt, I've noticed since the last time we saw these plans, there's been a considerable amount of off-road parking added around the cottages.
Yes, sir.
It looks like you've done an extremely good job, to me, of spreading them out, and it's, I think this is what we're trying to target when we ask people to add these things. When you come off of Compton Road, and you come to the first road there, if you turn to the left, is there room enough to get one or two spots to the left right there? And the reason I say that is because it's a pretty good walk from the nearest guest parking spot there. That's the only place I see that looks like it's underserved.
I don't think that'd be a problem to add a couple of spots there. As long, you know, we'll make sure with city traffic department, make sure they're comfortable with that throat distance there, but a couple of spots there doesn't look out of line to me. I assume you mean on the left there?
I do. Now, that's exactly what I'm talking about, on the left, when you turn to go into the cottages there. Because that's a pretty ways up there to that. This is one of the ones that's good.
Any more questions for Mr. Taylor? Okay, now we'll conduct a public hearing on zoning approximately 58.7 acres along Compton Road as planned residential development, PRD district, simultaneous with annexation, 2014-432. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15OZ 54, to zone approximately 58.7 acres located along Compton Road as planned residential development district simultaneous with annexation, 2014-432, Green Trails and Kevin Estes applicants.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Washington, Vice Mayor Young, Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 15R PH 55, adopted by the city council on September 17th, 2015, fixing the time to schedule public hearings to consider, one, adoption of plan of services, two, annexation, and three, zoning for approximately 6.1 acres along Roxbury Court, which have been proposed to be annexed to the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, 2015-504, 2015-418. Noticees said public hearings were published in the October 19th, 2015 issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Ballmer.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our next public hearing is an annexation petition for 6.1 acres located at the end of both Scottish Drive and Roxbury Court. These two parcels, if we could put the map up on the screen, are the two parcels colored in orange, or actually, the portion of two parcels, the existing lots have frontage on Collin Avenue. Follow my cursor here. This is a county subdivision called Rose Ridge on Collin Avenue, which is located west of St. Andrews Drive. And these lots actually begin here on the east side of Puckett Creek, and actually extend all the way west of Puckett Creek over to the Scottish Glen subdivision. And you'll notice that the eastern border of the requested area is kind of a curved area. It actually follows Puckett Creek, and so that's how the eastern border of the subject property was determined. The applicant would like to subdivide the rear portion of these two lots, that are the very westernmost portion of these two lots, to create several lots in the city limits that would have access to city services, especially city sewer. So he has requested the annexation of the subject property and the zoning of the subject property, which we will consider in a subsequent public hearing. The subject property does not have actual road frontage. If it were to be, if the rear portion of these two lots were to be subdivided off, it would not actually have any frontage on a public street. That is why the applicant would need to... That is why the applicant would need to combine these properties with properties that he owns in the Scottish Glen subdivision. So, if, once again, if you follow my cursor, this property that wraps around the bulb of the Scottish Drive cul-de-sac is actually owned by the applicant, as is this parcel here, which is on the south side of Roxburg Court. So, in order to get his required amount of road frontage, he would have to combine those two parcels with his property, and then, he would be able to further subdivide the property in order to achieve lots with proper road frontage. With that being said, the subdivision of the subject properties will be relatively limited because of, one, the existence of the floodway of Puckett Creek, as well as numerous utility and drainage easements that encumber the subject property. With that being said, the property is within the city's urban growth boundary. It is contiguous to the existing city limits on both its north and west sides, and the applicant has petitioned the city for the annexation of this property. You will notice that on the map in front of you, there is a little dialogue box that says approximately 10-foot gap. Right at the southeastern corner of the property, there was a 10-foot gap that was left out in order to keep from annexing the area here to the east of the subject property, which that would create the proverbial island of county in the city limits. So, with that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions. With regards to the plan of services, the city will be able to provide the full complement of city services to the subject property, and that is included in the plan of services that you have in your agenda packages. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I believe Mr. Roundtree from Huddleston Steel is here representing the applicant. If you have any questions for him.
What is the zoning, Mr. Farland, of those, that property in Scottish Glen?
Scottish Glen is RS10.
Is there a thought of how many, you know, looking at this, an area, is there a thought of how many lots that they're going to be able to get on this?
I would say, judging by the amount of the land that's encumbered by the floodway, as well as easements, I'd say you're probably looking at four to five lots max. And I don't even know if Dr. Mueller has the intentions of subdividing it for that many lots. It could be even less than that. And also, another limiting factor is the amount of road frontage that he will be able to get in the bulk of those cul-de-sacs.
Mr. Farland, in the future, can you show where the creek is on some of these diagrams?
Sure. And as a matter of fact, I can show you an exhibit. Here is a, if we could pull that up, this is a map of the floodway and the floodplain. The area that is colored in pink is the regulatory floodway, and development cannot encroach into the regulatory floodway. And you can see that approximately half of the requested area is in that regulatory floodway. The light blue area, the speckled light blue area, is in the 100-year floodplain, and development can occur in the 100-year floodplain provided that the city's floodplain management regulations are complied with.
He really is limited to what he can do.
It is. And if I had a plat of the property, you could see the sewer easements and other types of easements that run through the property that would further limit where construction could occur.
Any questions for Mr. Farland? Okay, we'll conduct a public hearing on a plan of services and annexation, 2015-2004, or, excuse me, 504. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for adoption Resolution 15RPS55 to consider adoption of a plan of services for approximately 6.1 acres located along Roxborough Court. Zolt Rene Mueller, applicants.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We'll now consider for adoption Resolution 15RPS55 to annex approximately 6.1 acres along Roxborough Court. Zolt and Rene Mueller, applicants. Mr. Farland, anything else on the zoning?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, we need to do just a motion on the resolution.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Farland, that's right.
So moved.
Still getting used to these new annexation.
Plan of services, yeah, they're confusing.
We have a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
We'll now conduct a public hearing on zoning approximately 6.1 acres along Roxborough Court as single-family residential, 10RS10 District, simultaneous with annexation.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. I've already described the way in which the applicant would like to develop the property in order to facilitate the subdivision of the property for single-family residential lots. He has requested a zoning of RS10, single-family residential district, simultaneous with annexation. And as we discussed, the property directly to the west, the Scottish Glen subdivision is zoned RS10, which is the same zoning classification that the applicant has requested for his property. Just to the north of the subject property is zoned PUD, Planned Unit District. That is part of the Victory Station Planned Unit District, and that particular portion of that planned development is, I believe, zoned for multifamily uses. To the south of the subject property is the Plantation South subdivision, which is zoned RS12 and RS10 as well, and the Westview subdivision, which is zoned RZ. Directly to the east of the subject property, across Puckett Creek, is the Rose Ridge subdivision, which is actually the subdivision that these two lots are a part of at present. And those are large, single-family estate lots in the county that were actually developed by the applicant. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions with regards to this zoning request simultaneous with annexation. I will point out that I did put the minutes from the September 2 Planning Commission at your desk. The incorrect set of minutes was inadvertently included in your agenda packages, so hard copies have been placed at your desk. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this zoning request. Be happy to answer any questions.
There's no structures on those, at the end of the cul-de-sac, those pieces of property. There's no structures on them.
That's correct. They were platted as common area. I think they were really kind of leftover portions of the development. Dr. Mueller has since purchased those parcels. There is an actual part of common area that still is common area at the end of one of those cul-de-sacs that has a pool on it, but these two areas never had any structures constructed on them.
Thank you, Mr. Farland. All right, we'll now open the public hearing on this zoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 15OZ55 to zone approximately 6.1 acres located along Roxborough Court as single-family residential, 10RS10 District, simultaneous with annexation. Zolt and Rene Mueller, applicants.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Pursuant to Resolution 15RPH56 adopted by the City Council on September 17, 2015, fixing the time to schedule public hearings to consider, one, adoption of a plan of services, two, the annexation, and three, zoning for approximately 17.3 acres along Manson Pike, which have been proposed to be annexed to the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, 2015-505 and 2015-419. Notice that said public hearings were published in the October 19, 2015, issue of a local newspaper. We'll now consider and conduct a public hearing on the plan of services and annexation. Ms. Green.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and council members. Our next public hearing this evening is for you to consider the plan of services and an annexation for property that's located along Manson Pike. The property is located north of Manson Pike and is shown in orange on the map that's on the screen before you. The total property is 17.9 acres. However, the area being presented to you is only 17.3 acres because a 10-foot strip has been left along the northern boundary of the property line, along the northeast, running parallel with Interstate 24, I-24. This property is adjacent to single-family subdivisions that are in the county, and you can see those are on Hallmark Drive and Brookwood Lane. And if that 10-foot strip were not left, then it would cause us to completely encircle that subdivision, which is something we are trying to avoid. So, Planning Commission studied this and is recommending that just a portion of this property be left out, that 10-foot strip running parallel with Interstate 24. There are also unincorporated areas to the west of the property, and that's the Middle Tennessee Campus. To the north is Interstate 24, which is in city limits, and just across from that are overall creek and another development that are within city limits. Property to the south, including Manson Pike, is currently in city limits. So, all the areas shaded yellow are current existing city limits. This property is contiguous with the city along its southern property line, but not along the northeastern property line because of that 10-foot gap. So, those 26 parcels that are located to the east are not completely encompassed because of the gap. The materials you have before you also include a plan of services, which outlines what services the city can provide and a timeframe for providing them. We will be able to effectively provide services to this property upon the effective date of annexation. Sanitary sewer is currently not available to the property, and the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department have a definition of available, which means it's not within a couple hundred feet. But you can see on this map the location of overall creek to the southeast, and that's the location of the sewer, which can serve this property. It will be the responsibility of the developer to extend that sewer to this property. The Planning Commission is recommending unanimously that you do annex this property. There were six of the seven Planning Commission members present the evening of the public hearing, and there are representatives of the applicant here this evening. If you have any questions from them, there was a petition for annexation made by the owners, who are Lewis and Elizabeth Jennings. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Also, we have representatives of the applicant. There's companion zoning change requests. That'll be the subject of the next public hearing.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Green? All right, we'll now conduct a public hearing on the plan of services and annexation, 2015-505. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
You should have already saved a map that I've created of this property, and over that, I have overlaid a line plot. I'll interrupt myself. My name is Chuck Sutherland. I live at 211 Norrine Roads, part of Tennessee. I've been invited here to speak on this subject by some citizens. So, as you can see on the map, there is Cave Passage, which runs underneath the plat drawing that I have here. It's my understanding that that plat may have been updated. I don't have the most recent version. But what my concern is, is if I can direct you to the west side of the map and the north, there are two large sinkholes. The sinkholes result from the Stream Cave, Military Spring Cave, and sinkholes happen. So, it's my concern that if you're developing on this property, especially on the north side, what I'd like to see done is a proper geotechnical study so that the cave passage location can be very accurately determined. What I have here, what you're looking at, is a line plot, and it looks like it's very wide. It's not. It's just a line. And the reason for that is that surveying caves under murky water is fairly difficult. So, this is an approximate map. So, any questions about this map?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Pat Sanders. I live on Armstrong Valley Road. I don't live on the Manson Pike. We battled the business with the karst system and the cave system, Snell Shell Cave, which is vast, and you all were given a map of it, I think, yesterday by email, I was just told. But when we were battling the supercollider in 1988, we learned a lot more by way of the spielunkers, the, we called them the cave guys. And they have the grotto, Nashville Grotto, and they came to our meeting, and we met with Bart Gordon, our congressman at that time, about the cave system in Wilson County, Rutherford County, and Williamson County, and how vast it was, and what the supercollider tunnel that was planned for 60 miles around Rutherford County was going to do to the cave system. And since then, I've been very interested in the cave system. It might be where I get, I have two wells on my farm. It might be where I get my water. I don't know. I'm concerned always about the water and the cave systems, and I want the developers to look below the ground, not just above the ground. And just like this man said, there are two sinkholes he already knows about on this property. Only personal interest I have in this home is my great-grandfather-in-law, my husband's great-grandfather's buried there, and his great-great-grandfather built the house. So, we've always been interested in Springfield, and it's been called everything from that to the Washington House. But it's a beautiful place, and the cemetery and the home, I hope, will be preserved. And they mentioned in this article about two acres being set aside around the house, and I hope the cemetery, of course, will be preserved. There might be some law in the books that mentions that, but I want you all to think about getting further study on the cave system underneath, either through the grotto in Nashville or different hydrogeologists, hydro, what do you call them? Hydrologists? Geologists that know about the water. That was the problem with the supercollider. The person that picked the site in Murfreesboro for Rutherford County and the surrounding counties, he was an aerospace engineer. And I met him, and I said, "You're the one that picked the site here." Well, he does things from the ground up, aerospace, and we wanted a geologist to be looking into this. Luckily, it went to Texas, but unlucky for Texas, they ran the people off, and they stopped it because they ran out of money. And I don't know how many of you were here in 1988, but that's when it happened. So, just want to put in a pitch for the water system, but mainly that collapsing of the cave system is very important. We've had sinkholes in Clarksville, Tennessee, and Lebanon, Tennessee, right downtown, just go down. And of course, you have heard of things on the interstate between here and Chattanooga, and you've heard of sinkholes in the whole house with a man in the bed going down in Florida. So, I don't feel too stable about some things with our land sometimes, but that was my pitch. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against the plan of services or the annexation? Excuse me, this is just, yeah, the plan of services and annexation. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll consider for adoption Resolution 15RPS56 to consider adoption of a plan of services for approximately 17.3 acres located along Manson Pike, Lewis, and Elizabeth Jennings, applicants.
Can I ask a question? Back to being confused on all these different new ways we're doing this. So, right now...
So right now, are we going to have another public hearing? For some reason, my download is not working. We're going to have another public hearing about this, and then we'll be doing it. So all we're doing right now is plan of services, right?
Plan of services and annexation.
Yep, all right, very good.
And this is, of course, first reading. Motion second, Ms. Wright. If you call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll now consider for adoption Resolution fifteen RA fifty-six to annex approximately seventeen point three acres located along Manson Pike, 2015-505, Lewis and Elizabeth Jennings applicants.
This would be to zone it?
No, we have to, yeah. We're doing one on plan of services now, annexation.
And then we'll do one on...
Full for approval.
We've got to have a public hearing, don't we?
Just so I understand, what's the difference between services and annexation and annexing?
Well, I think one is the, and that's what I'm getting, I've gotten confused on, the plan of services for the annexation to show that we can provide services, and then...
Correct. The statute requires that before any property is annexed, a plan of services has to be adopted.
So it's really a plan of services if annexed?
Yes, it's for the property. A plan of services for the property. We may try to tweak the language on this.
Yeah, it may be if annexed, not annexed as well.
Yes.
That's the way it's going to apply to legislation.
We'll try to fix that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Well, I'm on the same page with somebody.
Mr. Tindall, we're actually, Mr. Tindall, we're actually smarter than what we sound like right now, so.
Be careful, Mayor.
You're already here, so you can't change your mind. All right, so now we're considering a resolution to annex the property.
So moved.
I think Mr. Washington already made a motion.
Give me a second.
That's second.
All right, then a motion of second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Now, we're going to conduct a public hearing on zoning approximately seventeen point three acres located along Manson Pike as residential multifamily sixteen, RM sixteen district, and gateway design overlay one, GDO one district, simultaneous with annexation. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. Thank you again. This next public hearing is companion to the previous two public, or two resolutions that you just considered for annexation and adoption of a plan of services. It's for seventeen point three acres, which is located north of Manson Pike, and it's the area that's shaded orange on the map before you. This map shows the areas that are located within city limits currently, and those are the areas shaded yellow, and some of those areas have a diagonal pattern across them. The properties to the south are zoned RS fifteen, and that's single-family residential district, and that's actually to the southwest. Directly across the street are properties zoned RM sixteen and CL, that's multifamily district and local commercial district. And they also have that hatch pattern placed upon them, and that represents the gateway design overlay district, GDO one, which those properties are located with, so they have a base zone of RM sixteen and CL and a overlay of GDO one. Properties contiguous to this parcel along the eastern property line are not shaded a color, they're white, so they are in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County and are zoned for single-family residential purposes and agricultural purposes in the county. To the northeast, running diagonal to this property, is Interstate twenty-four, and it is in current city limits, as well as properties owned PRD, Planned Residential District. The PRD is for Pearling Brook, which is a planned development, and allows multifamily dwellings to be constructed upon it. Those dwellings are mostly to the north of the property line because a large part of that parcel is affected by Overall Creek and its floodway and floodplain. Just across the Manson Pike to the south, I mentioned, there's properties owned RM sixteen and CL, and the Planning Commission recently approved final design review and site plan approval for a new daycare center to be located there. Construction hasn't begun, but I did want to point out that they had reviewed that plan and approved it, and the Board of Zoning Appeals granted a special use variance for the portion of the daycare that's zoned RM sixteen, as it's not permitted by right. The owners of the property, the Jennings, have a contract to sell their property to Hunter McDowell, who are the applicants for this application. The property is currently zoned for residential purposes in the county and would come into the city with an interim zoning of RS fifteen unless a companion zoning change request is made along with the annexation and plan of services. The applicants, Hunter McDowell, have requested a change in the zoning. They've asked for you to consider it to be zoned RM sixteen, and that's multifamily residential district. The sixteen refers to the density that would be permitted. That means sixteen dwelling units would be permitted per acre, and that would be for the total area that is zoned RM sixteen. If, just with simple math, if you multiplied sixteen times seventeen point three, which is the acres of the property, there would be approximately two-hundred-and-seventy-seven dwelling units that would be permitted, and that doesn't consider any density bonuses that might be granted to the property. This property is also located within the Blackman Community Land Use Plan, and I've included an excerpt in your materials, and I've got it on the screen now. And this plan was done just a little over ten years ago and does recommend that this property develop, and I quote, "as planned mixed-use area centering on technology-based uses, i.e., educational, office, research park, and limited commercial, and anchored by redevelopment, redeveloped MTSU agricultural campus site." And that campus site is located directly to this property to the west. So multifamily zone is not what would permit that type of development. However, the Planning Commission considered the multifamily zone as an appropriate transition from the existing single-family residence located to the east to the potentially redeveloped property adjacent to this on the west side. The evening of the public hearing, there were six of the seven Planning Commission members present. They all did recommend approval of this zoning change request. I do want to point out that the zoning change request also includes a request to be zoned GDO one as well. When staff became aware of this application made by Hunter McDowell, we contacted the applicants and asked how they would feel about being included in the gateway design overlay district in addition to the multifamily zone, and they were not against it. We presented that idea to the Planning Commission. They thought it was a very good idea to include it in the gateway design overlay district as well. So this request is for you to zone it to multifamily residential district and GDO one. The gateway, as you know, primarily regulates design, and we expect a higher quality of design in the site design, in the landscaping, and in the building materials for this property. So if it were zoned GDO one, it would go through a review process that required at least two months, initial design review and final design review with the Planning Commission with some additional standards. The applicants held a neighborhood meeting a couple nights before the public hearing at Planning Commission, and I mentioned before that the recommendation of the Planning Commission is unanimous that this zoning change request be approved. Mr. Clyde Roundtree is representing the applicants. He's here, and so is a representative of the developers. He submitted a PowerPoint presentation that he'd like to go through with you prior to your public hearing. If you have questions, of course, we'll be most happy to answer them for you.
Mayor McFarland, commissioners, my name is Clyde Roundtree with Huddleston Steel Engineering, and I'm here on behalf of the developer of Bonneville Development, Charles Haskett, and Mr. Bill Hunter, and our architect's here, Mr. Bernie Weinstein. We did conduct a public hearing, I mean, a neighborhood meeting, really, just to kind of see what the neighbors' concerns might be. And originally, the site plan that was presented in was a fairly different site plan than what's going to be proposed tonight. And we're excited about the possibility of developing this property, but we're also, I'm excited about the developer's attitude. The house has become a point of concern by the neighbors. We've had several calls, and we've had calls from Texas personally. People have had some vested interest in that house because of its history, and you're going to see as Charles presents his plan, the master plan, the house is something that's been highly respected to the best of our ability. We know in the process, there's no guarantees that anything can actually happen in terms of preserving it guaranteed, but it is the intention of the developer to make sure that the house stays intact, as well as there's multiple mature trees around the home that really become a nice amenity for the apartment complex and something that they can be proud of, and something that can be respected from a design standpoint and a historical standpoint. So that was one of the primary concerns that the neighbors had initially was what's going to happen to the house. And we like to say we feel like we've addressed the house more than appropriately. The other thing that the neighbors were concerned was about privacy. You know, what's going to happen to the buffer? There's a really nice substantial buffer that's currently in place. I've walked the site with the developer. We feel very confident that the amount of grade that would be required along the buffer will allow the trees to stay intact, and so we feel like not only would we have a nice solid buffer, but it's very high. It's, you know, sixty, eighty feet tall trees, very dense in manner, so we feel like we're going to really be able to hide any kind of concerns the neighbors have in terms of privacy. And they also asked us that we reorient the pool. They've referenced another apartment complex in the area of the pool. A lot of the sound from the pool goes into their neighborhood, as well as a lot of light from that pool, and a lot of the activities from the pool are basically visible from Manson Pike, but also visible from their neighborhood, so we've reoriented the pool house and the pool as well to kind of alleviate that concern. They've had concerns over the acorn lights that provide a lot of light pollution, you know, in terms of intrusive light, and the developer's more than happy to change the fixture to accommodate that concern they have over lighting. And a big concern they have is their neighborhood in terms of connectivity, because I know the city's encouraging us to have connectivity, but we've assured them that's really related to emergency services. So there's no intention for Hallmark Road to go through as far as a secondary exit for the apartment complex. It really is there primarily to serve any kind of emergency needs that they may have in their development, that you can come through departments and get to their development, or vice versa. And lastly, just want to say before Charles gets his presentation, we know full well that we're going to have to engage a geotechnical engineer in order to develop this site. Their concern's been granted, the developer's been out, we've seen the, we've seen the initial entrance to the cave system, and all that'll be handled through the process of getting the T-DAC permits, going through the process. We need to make sure that it's a structurally sound area to develop, and it'll highly influence our site plan design as well. So with that in mind, Charles, I'd like to ask you to come up and finish your presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
My name is Charles Haskett with Bonneville Development, and I'll be representing Mr. McDowell, Mr. Hunter, the applicants, and the development of this property. This by no means, obviously, is a formal supplemental, but I did want to, because the neighbors have voiced several strong opinions, illustrate how we feel like we properly addressed those, and I'll just kind of walk you through the site plan we have now, front to back. So starting at the front of the property, you'd have a very lush landscaped entrance with a direct view back to the historical home, which I have some photos of the home itself and the two acres of the mature tree canopy preserved that we hope to keep intact. Building A, I know it's hard to see, but it's the far-left building on the site plan. We've reorientated so that it shields any view from people gathering at the pool onto the adjacent homeowners. The main entrance into the property, we've aligned directly with the center and house, put it on access, so anybody that pulls up, you'll have this very beautiful streetscape view down the main drive, straight through to the front entrance of the house with hardwood trees aligned on both sides and sidewalks as well. The yellow line working front, left, or right, and through the side just kind of indicates the path of pedestrian connectivity throughout the site. We'd have multiple green space areas and pocket parks that end up getting amenitized with fire pits, grilling areas, swings, arbors, that sort of thing, so that we've got amenities spread throughout the community. One of the other things we did, for the most part, tried to keep the building so that we'd be orientated against, or, yeah, against the property line to limit the number of direct views from three-story apartment buildings onto the adjacent properties. The highlighted yellow buildings that are in line towards the right center are the right of Hallmark Drive, which is the drive that ties up in the site. Those are proposed to be more of a two-story, direct-entry-type building, and so that'll also help eliminate the potential for any views on the property. The dark green clouded areas along the bottom of the site plan are the heavy existing buffer area that Clyde mentioned, which I've got some photos of those, and we intend on keeping those fully intact and supplementing where we need to do so. And then, lastly, our hope is that we will be able to put the retention pond at the back of the site, preserve some of the existing vegetation, and use that as a buffer between us and I-24 to the north and east. So this is an elevation that we've been working on specifically for this project, and we feel like it's very unique and very attractive, and we hope that it'll accomplish two things. One is by breaking it, and this is a traditional three-story garden-style apartment building that we've broken up into what we're trying to achieve is a colonial row or townhome style effect, and what we hope this will do will help reduce the massing of the larger building so that emphasis can remain on the existing home and the estate, and also by breaking it up and adding some of these classical early American architectural features, hopefully, we can develop a property that seems like it was developed all in the, at the same time and in harmony. The next handful of photos are from a property that we are in the final stages of completing now, and really what I just wanted to illustrate is the high level of quality finishes that we hope to bring that will be in this property. Here, you'll see some of the upgraded pendant lighting fixtures that we'll have throughout the development, granite countertops. We use luxury vinyl plank flooring for the most part, except for in the bedrooms and closet areas. This is another view of the kitchen. Forty-two-inch tall upper cabinets are standard, and we use, excuse me, also use upgraded bar pulls, which is fairly uncommon throughout the multifamily industry. We also have stainless steel appliance package. So these are interior photos of the clubhouse. What we'd like to do is provide areas to our residents that are elegant, yet functional. This billiard room allows people to hang out, play pool. Obviously, they can hang out by the bar, watch their favorite soap opera or football game or whatever, and is also very attractive as well. This particular property has what I would call a lodge theme, so it had very heavily Craftsman-style architecture, which was evident on the outside of the buildings, but also we pull that theme into the buildings itself, evidenced by the wood flooring, the masonry fireplace, the rough-sawn cedar trusses that we have, as well the tangeal group ceiling. It's just another photo of the same concept. Well-equipped fitness center. We provide large fitness centers with free weights, resistance training, and cardio equipment as well, so that residents of all ages, whatever, can use them. This is a rendering. This area is still under construction, but I think very clearly illustrates our commitment to excellence in providing very beautiful amenities for our residents, and also they provide beautiful views for people adjacent to the property. You'll notice the intense landscaping throughout the pool area. This is a saltwater pool. We also featured an eighteen-hundred-square-foot pavilion, built-in natural gas grills, shade arbor, and just beyond to the left, there's an event lawn that we can host community events, or children can go out and play, or whatever the case may be. So as Clyde mentioned, some of the biggest neighborhood concerns that we had at the town hall meeting and were voiced at the Planning Commission meeting as well, war, privacy, light pollution, connectivity to Hallmark Road, and, most importantly, the existing home on property, which is known as Springfield. So this is a view of the existing buffer standing in Hallmark, looking back onto the subject property. As you will notice, the vegetation is thick and is high as well. The shack you can see on the left-hand side is actually on the subject property, but that's because the current owner cut out a small section so she could walk her dog through there. This is another view from the subject property, looking back onto the adjacent, towards the adjacent homeowner. the adjacent homeowner, just south of Hallmark Drive, as you can see. I don't know what the exact height of those trees are, but they're taller than a three-story building would be, and they're, it's fairly thick as well. To the, to the northeast of Hallmark Drive, this is a photo kind of looking back towards the backyard of the adjacent residence. As you'll see, this is probably the weakest point in the buffer. So we would recommend supplementing this buffer with some additional hardwoods, evergreens, you know, whatever it takes to meet our commitment to the neighbors. One of the other main concerns were light pollution. One of the neighbors specifically, you mentioned one of the nearby multifamily communities that obviously just wasn't very attractive to them, and even from their distance, had a significant amount of light pollution onto their property. Upon myself going over and investigating property, it appears that they use the typical acorn-style lighting fixture that doesn't have any kind of shield on it, no directional lighting whatsoever. So what we would propose would be to use downward directed lighting. Obviously, we'd like to use a more decorative fixture appropriate for, for the taste and the style of this community, and the amenity, and pedestrian areas, and then shoebox fixtures in, in most of the vehiculars, but all downward directional. Most of the neighbors didn't want any kind of connection to, to Hallmark Drive, but after meetings with some of the staff and it's typical practice for these types of developments to have secondary access, and so in all likelihood, we will have some sort of direct connection to Hallmark. But what we propose is to use some sort of solidly screened gate. It can be a crash gate, or it could be, have an automatic operator only accessible through the emergent, the, the first responders, or whatever the appropriate term is there. But either way, it wouldn't be for normal resident use. And then the last and probably the most impactful objection we had to the property is, is what was going to be done with the existing Springfield home, which, like Clyde mentioned, our original site plan didn't give any consideration to the home or the, you know, the 200-year-old oak and pough trees that, that are there. But we engaged some very well-respected land planners within the multifamily development community, brought them out to the site, and really feel like we can create an amenity out, out of the home and out of the, basically the, the estate portion as well, as you can see from the, the site plan. And the lawn itself, even though there's, there's still going to be a lot of investigation that has to be done to really figure out the feasibility of keeping the home, what kind of condition it's in, and what kind of life safety concerns we would have to implement to bring it up to a, a usable condition. But just the lawn itself lends itself to all sorts of amenities and uses I've listed there on the right-hand side, you know, whether it be rope swings, or picnic areas, or hosting farmer's markets, or, or whatever it is. So what I, what I hope to accomplish here today is, one, show our willingness and commitment to work with the neighbors, and also show to you that we're dedicated to bringing the highest-quality product to the city of Murfreesboro. Thanks for your time, and I'm available to answer any questions you have.
And I've heard willingness, I've heard commitment, I've heard several words describing, but you have not put any restrictive covenant in place that would have protected that moment at this point, have you?
We have not. Basically, all, all that we have this time is we have the land under contract, and we have a ba, very basic understanding of the site, geotechnical surveys, getting the story ends out to instructional engineers to, out to look at the house and really figuring out. Without doing any of that, we, we, we can't commit to anything. But it's our best intention to do so.
Will that geotechnical work be done before the, before the contract is executed? I mean, before?
Before the contract is executed, but, you know, those, those are consultants and reports that cost tens of thousands of dollars, and typically we defer those until after we have the land use in place.
But your purchasing of the property is contingent on the geotechnical report coming back and giving you a positive result, that you can build apartments where you plan to build them, correct?
Essentially. That's not a condition of closing. It's condit, it's conditional apartment zoning.
I just have a question for the applicant. Was there a consideration, since you have so many unknowns on the property with the, the house, the geotech, the buffering, going to GDO-1 requirements, which adds an extra layer, layer of buffering? It seems like this would have been a prime candidate to do a plan development on this, to come in with a site plan, showing what you were going to do, showing what the layout is, and how you're going to meet all those requirements. Was there a thought in, in why you didn't do that?
Other than, you know, we, we have very high standards ourselves, and we, we're confident in that, that we're going to make an attractive product. And we were hoping that, that we would get everyone on the council and our neighbors comfortable with the fact that, that we'd be able to do that, because honestly, from what I understand, is, is going through that PRD zoning process takes an additional time and, and dollars that go at risk earlier for, on, on the development side of it.
Yeah, I mean, it definitely does take an additional step, but when you, when, in my opinion, whenever you have property that, you know, like this property is a fairly narrow piece of property, and you're working on those, that gives some assurance to the neighborhoods or the neighbors to make sure that you're, you're getting and they're getting the buffering that, that we're talking about. But that was just a question, so.
Sure. Well, in regards to the buffering, I'm fairly certain that someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but within the, the guidelines of the GDO, we're going to be required by those standards to provide a strong, I believe it's a type C buffer, which I believe will exceed. So for all practical purposes, we're going to be doing all the things that you would get out of the PRD process. We're just hoping to, to streamline it.
I'll ask one more question. One of the things that just immediately struck me was with your map, and we were, I wasn't able to have any kind of, really a whole lot of information on this prior to your presentation. I mean, we didn't have this to read through and study through, so it's all pretty new. But the first thing that struck me about it was the fact that you have a neighborhood on this side, and you have a big field over here on this side, and it looks like all of the com, the, the buildings are built pretty much, look, to be pretty close to the line of the neighborhood. And, and maybe that was because you were trying to have the driveway look straight back at the house, but it, I guess just my country boy sense would say, well, why don't you just put it over there where it's not looking straight over top of their houses?
Yeah, so the original plan, and, and I've got it pulled up on this PowerPoint, if you guys want to reference back to it, but the original plan did have all of the buildings essentially separated away from the, the property line with, with the roadway or parking lot, but it also didn't give any consideration to the house. And so we had that additional space to kind of play with. It's really the, the, the change we've made in securing out that, that two, two and a half acres of the existing home, in which we were kind of forced to be more efficient with that space. And, and those are two-story, the, the ones highlighted that are on the property line that are highlighted in yellow.
I'm not sure what the elevation's like out there, but if I remember right, then it's slope off this way?
It gently slopes back from the left one-third is, is a relatively flat, flat or slopes towards Manson Pike, and then the back two-third slope to the bottom kind of right-hand corner of, of the site.
May I add that this is a concept plan that they are showing you for illustrative purposes?
That's right.
Does it have my blessing? Does it have planning commission's blessing? This is just something showing you what they could do. And as you're, I'm sorry to interrupt, but as your conversation progresses, I just want you to know that it's just something that they've put together as, hey, this is what we're planning on doing. We haven't done our technical review or thorough review, and planning commission certainly may place, they may say the orientation of this building isn't appropriate next to those houses. They have the authority to do that under the zoning ordinance, to add additional buffers that may not be required. So I just wanted to clarify that this plan is, is, has not been through any review process through city.
But, but we are changing the zoning from what it currently was, from educational, office, technical, to multifamily.
So it wasn't zoned for that. The land use plan recommends that it be zoned for that. What it is zoned for today is single-family residential purposes.
So it comes in as RS-17 with annexation?
It would be RS-15 if nothing, no other application was made. So if these developers decided that they, the contract fell through and they weren't going to move forward, this property would still be zoned RM-16, and those uses that are permitted in the zoning ordinance to be developed here would be permitted. Now, planning commission felt that with it being in the GDO, that, that provides an extra layer of scrutiny and review, and that whatever goes here will be a good design. But what you're really considering is multifamily zoning for this property, this applicant, they want to move forward, but they may or may not, and I don't want, I just don't want there to be a false.
Really, what, what you're saying, to sum it up, is if we, once we zone this RM-16, if this didn't work for this applicant, it's zoned RM-16, there's no assurances if another applicant came in, because it's a bulk zone for that piece of property?
RM-16 and GDO-1.
Right.
Yes, sir.
And there would be no protection for the home at all if that were the case, right? If it were just turned over to somebody else's RM-16 property?
I don't think there'd be any protection even if they did. I mean, they're saying they want to do it.
Unless there was a restrictive covenant that they voluntarily had put in place as a...
And I would caution them, and they may, if, if that was the way they were going to choose to move forward, generally they would have that recorded before third and final reading. And what I would suggest is that they, if that was something they wanted to do voluntarily, that they would go ahead and get information on that house, because you don't want to commit to keeping a house that's completely, and it may not be, but completely, completely destroyed by termites, because this house, if they use it as amenity, will have to be suitable for the residents to go in it, so it would have to be commercial building standards, which is okay, they can convert it to that. But I would ca, I would want them to do a little research before making that commitment in a restrictive covenant. But that restrictive covenant would be voluntarily, voluntary to them. It's not something we could condition zoning on.
Okay, all right. We'll, we'll need to conduct a public hearing. So this is a public hearing for the zoning. And so anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Public hearing is now open.
Hello, my name is Leslie Smith. I live at 3949 Hallmark Drive, one property in from the property that you're considering tonight. I'll say one thing initially, is that I'm totally confused as to what's going on. We had a public meeting, I'm, excuse me, we had a neighborhood meeting, pretty good attendance. We were shown a, a drawing of, of what could happen, which is nothing like what we saw tonight, not even close. The information that, that I heard at, at that meeting, at the planning meeting, and now, now, none of it matches. So what, what I'm concerned about is that we're going to change this zoning, which I'm against, changing it, to an RM-16, and with no idea what's going on next door. And it's, and it's scary for me as a homeowner, excuse me. At the meeting, it sounds like it was a, to, to hear the people speak, that we walked away from there with some pretty good feelings. Well, none of the homeowners did, I don't think. My concerns then was noise, security, traffic, and the privacy of our community. Right now, this is a total change, and, and in reality, the, the land of the buildings now, that privacy has even been threatened more, because the buildings used to be toward the center, and, and now it's at the edge, as, as was highlighted. And, and the size of the, the other thing about the drawing that I was seeing, excuse me, was the, when they, I didn't see the house that we're trying to save represented on there. I saw a little white dot about, square about like this, and I saw Mr. and Mrs. Harris's house, which is next door, even with him, about like this. So there's some, I mean, either I misread it or, or something of that nature, but I surely didn't, didn't pick up on it. It looks like a large green area with a little bitty house, and I can guarantee you that that home is bigger than Mr. and Mrs. Harris's house. I still am against the zoning request, because, you know, I don't think this land supports an RM-16 zoning. I don't think it's big enough. I think the, the, the issues with the caves and, and stuff underneath it just, just won't support that. And, and I think it'll affect the quality of life in our subdivision, from noise, traffic, and everything else, nothing changes. And, you know, and the house itself, I haven't heard anything yet that says that that house has got a chance of standing.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
My name is Heather McQuitty, and I live at 326 Biltmore Circle.
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
Heather McQuitty. I live at 326 Biltmore Circle. Honestly, my part is the history of this house. We all sent you bullet points, Tammy and I, yesterday. You got them by email, and they're in the packet. And the thing is, is the cave alone is scary. You know, in the high-flow season, that cave in the back of it produces 200, because there's a spring, 220 million gallons a day that comes out of that cave in high-flow season. That's one thing. But the history of this house is unbelievable. I mean, you can see it. You can see George Washington's descendants, Davy Crockett. You, even the, the cemetery is on the historical register. And I hope that you all noticed, in the last one that I saw, the last meeting they had, they took a picture of what the plan was last time, and it looks the same to me in the corner, that that cemetery is right next to where, close to the pool house and the pool, and the first one we saw was even closer. Now, I don't know about y'all, but going to visit your loved ones and seeing people screaming in the pool is one thing. If something happens to that pool and it goes into the grave sites, I would like to know if anybody has gotten in touch with anybody that has recently been buried there to see if they have any problem with this being beside their loved ones. I just, you know, the history's in the house, the history's in the house. I understand that, you know, apartments have to be done, and people want to live here, and I get all that, but, you know, there's still history. And if we knock this house down or allow it to be destroyed, and we allow the next house, the historical home, to be destroyed, there's not going to be any history left for our children. So what do we do? We show them something, oh, well, here's the grass that this house was on. You know, I would like Murfreesboro to be known when I talk to somebody as a historical place, not as we don't care about anything, historical here. And I keep hearing that. When I call people that matter, that's what they say. I mean, they say that about us, and it just makes me upset, because there are a lot of people, we have a petition that we had signed, and we're not done yet, but the people that we tell about this house and the history that don't know about it, they care. They care. They're tired of things getting taken out of the history of this town. They're tired of the next big thing or whatever, and it's just exhausting. You know, I've only been working on this for a few weeks, but the calls I've made and the people I've talked to, it's, it's sad, but anyway, that's all I wanted to say, and thank you.
Hi, I'm Tammy Cleek. I live at 3957 Hallmark Drive. I brought packets. You guys got these via email yesterday. We have a petition also that's being signed, ongoing. It's really not going to matter what's put here. If it all goes under, this is a... If it all goes under, this is a major car system underneath. There's been books written about it, articles written about it. Who's the book seller now, huh? Okay. I just had to say that, sorry. I'm very passionate as Heather's, very passionate about this historical property. I'm very passionate about that, but I'm also very passionate about this cave and our environment. Murfreesboro is growing, and that's great. This is a tiny piece of property, tiny. I know they want to sell their property, and I know they have the right to do that. This is ridiculous, what we're trying to put on this property. If I didn't live adjacent to it, which I do, my parents live adjacent to it, so of course we have a vested interest in it, but if I didn't, if I lived over across town where Heather does, or if I lived where one of you guys did, I would say, don't do this.
Take your time, Ms. Cleak. We're not, you're fine.
I respect Mrs. Jennings. I've had many talks with her over the years. Have nothing against the Jennings whatsoever. Lived by them many years, my parents lived by them more years. This is almost like sacred ground. And this cave system adds such another dimension. If you read about it, if we keep putting apartments, residential, multifamily, on top of the system, we're going to have some people fall through the ground. We're going to have somebody tap into that cave and it's gonna, it's gonna go in. And it's gonna cause flooding. It's gonna hurt our water systems. It's all there in black and white. I emailed it to you guys. I hope you had a chance to read it yesterday. Maybe you didn't. I know you're busy. I can go over everything, but you've got it before you. I just want to say, I hold nothing against these people either, but there's another field waiting that doesn't have the history, that doesn't have this car system, that doesn't have 250 million gallons of water per day in high season coming out of the back of it, so big that the tunnel underneath the interstate, I don't know if this will show up or not, is huge. You can, it's, it's stapled. It's the only sheet in your packet that's stapled. You can drive a car through there and maybe two. It's very tall and very wide. I thought it was a cattle crossing for years, but it's not. They started out with these smaller, these smaller pipes when they built 24, and they realized, that's not going to hold the water. Maybe they surveyed it during dry season, you know, because if you look on the front, this is what it looks like, like there's nothing there. That was the other day. Today, I believe, you went down to the cave system with my husband. You can't see the opening, I think.
It's underwater.
It's underwater. And I've been down there when it's a roaring river, you know? I think about children in apartment complexes and adults for that matter. You can build a fence, you can build a wall, but people are curious. And so I would just say to you, please, please consider this environmental issue and the historical issue, please. Amazing grace, how sweet the sound that saved a ranch like me. I once was lost, but now I see. Now I found I was blind, but now I see. I'm asking you to see, please.
Thank you, Ms. Cleak. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay.
Good evening. My name's John Keller. I live at 2111 Brookwood Lane. I don't have the history that everybody else does here. I've only lived in this community for a couple of months. My wife and I moved there and, and we chose it selectively for its character and just its location and everything. It's a beautiful community. If you haven't had a chance to drive by, it's almost like a little oasis right on Manson. And, you know, you look at it, you're, you're surprised to see that little island there. One of the things I just think that is, is, stands out to me, I unfortunately didn't have an opportunity to participate in the neighborhood meeting, and the planning meeting happened literally, I think, the night we moved in or, or maybe two days later or something like that, so we weren't aware of it. But hearing someone put out that, oh, well, we showed one plan one day, and tonight we all of a sudden have a, a new plan without having contacted any neighbors to go over that before they brought it in front of you is, is rather surprising. You know, if you're partnering with someone, usually you're going to put it out there and say, let's discuss some of the changes that we've made. That has not happened. Additionally, what, what you heard a lot of is, I'm willing to and I would love to and so forth, but no commitments. There's a big difference between saying, well, yeah, I'll try to do that and I'll do my best versus saying, this will not happen, and I'll let you hold me accountable by putting some things in place to guarantee those things. And I didn't hear that at all. So I would just ask that, you know, if, if you overlook the, the cave system, if you overlook the, the history of the house and all of the other things, at the very least, look at this as a, a new plan, which has not been vetted. You, you heard it yourself, that it's not been looked at from a technical perspective. Once you take that land and you say, well, now it's a GDO or whatever it is, you know, I'm not, sorry, I don't know all the lingo, but once you put that thing in place, this developer may not be able to do it, but the next developer can do it. And guess what? They may not do those surveys. They may just come in and say, I'm building what I'm gonna build because it's zoned this way. And, and, because it's already there, and there's not really anything to stop it. So I would just ask that, at the very least, let's, let's take some time to, to look at this and, and, you know, be patient. There's no rush. There's no reason we can't take our time on this and, and look at it longer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
My name is Donna Watts. I live at 3917 Hallmark Drive. I have lived there for 36 years. When I moved there 36 years ago, you'd have told me I had this knocking at my back door, I'd have said, you're crazy. I'm with the rest of them. We're gonna try. We might, maybe. We'll see. There's no guarantee. Every time we see something, it's totally different, totally different. There's no commitment other than we'll try, we'll see, maybe, we might. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watts.
Good evening. I wasn't gonna say anything, but, and my name is Marion Travis, and I do not live in Murfreesboro. I live in Rockvale, Tennessee. It's a beautiful country out there, and I've seen a lot of development going on out there and a lot of the beauty going. My family is in, does a reenactment, and it's very fascinating. It takes you back to another world. And I think that with this property, and I have been down Manson Pike and have never seen it until Heather pointed it out to me, and I knew that there was another bed and breakfast around the corner. It was like on the corner there where the Chevrolet was. They tore that down. It was an old home. You know, it, when you go to something like that, you just forget, you know, the world around you, your problems and things like that, if that place exists for you to go to, like the other place like Sam Davis and places like that. But I think things like that should need, need to be preserved and not built on. And it, to me, is just important, I mean, I don't know what else to say, is that I hope that you look at that also, that it's important for education for the children, to take them to, and even for adults. And so I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Travis. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against?
Just wanted to, real quickly, to respond to a few things. One, in regards to the, the changed plan, that was done purposely, but obviously it had the exact opposite impact that I hoped it, hoped it would. We were very diligent over the past few weeks, taking the comments that we've received from the community, from the Planning Commission, and putting those to work. And it's very difficult to, to do, one with a very limited information that we, that we have to date. And, you know, you can, you can only make so many changes at once, and obviously we still have a long way to go. So in regards to, you know, the, the plan changing and moving, if there's been any receipt, I certainly do apologize for that. And then, in, in regards to our commitment to preserve the house, our commitment to preserve the house is as strong as it can be. The only reason I can't sit here today and tell you that we will absolutely save this house is because I can't. This is something that could mean millions of dollars, and I just don't have that. And so I, I hope that you all understand that we're not trying to be wishy-washy or deceitful in, in any way. We're willing to, willing to make as firm a commitment as we can at this point.
And I'd, I'd like to say we're not acting out of ignorance because we, we were fortunate the day we went out to the property, to walk the property, and I was, I was impressed candidly because Charles and another fellow that was with him, literally every building was something they tried to figure out how to save. I mean, there's a, there's a smokehouse on the property, there's another cabin on the property, there's, there's another outbuilding we don't really know what it's used for, but they went through every structure to evaluate the best they could. And then we were fortunate because there was a family member that drove up when we were there. We were in the impression the house wasn't being lived in. And so I looked through the window, I said, there's a dog in the house. And I go, that house is probably been lived in, unless it's a fake dog. But the fact of the matter, she drove up and we walked through the house. So there's a little bit of a, we're not being blind that the house is, it's, it's a livable house. There is obviously some damage that you can see in terms of rotting, and it's really an assessment of going, what is it going to take to make the house not only livable but usable as an amenity for the apartment? That's, so I just want you to realize this, it wasn't pie in the sky. And as far as the scene called, we've walked the property, we know the property dips back. We know that's something that's gonna have to be addressed. And the GDO, and our thought was, as far as going with more of a straight zoning, we knew the GDO would be a, it's a, it is a level and a standard, and it has a site plan review process that allows us to go before Planning Commission multiple times, site plan review multiple ti, you know, there's gonna be a lot of staff influence in terms of making sure we're respecting the criteria that citizens, the neighbors have. And I, and it's really interesting because I'm with Charles, we really thought we were doing the right thing by taking their concerns, by, by really trying to address every concern they would have, especially in terms of respecting the house. Because, I mean, for the sightline to just basically favor the house, and really Charles' position as a developer was, it's even an infraction on that house not to be seen from Manson Pike. I mean, he really didn't want the house to be shielded by a series of apartments, and all of a sudden you happen upon the house. He thought it was to honor the house and honor the history, make it a straight sightline, so it really becomes a part of the character. Let the architecture of the apartments be influenced by the architecture of the house. So I, as far as the developer's concerned, you're not gonna find too many, they're gonna be more respectful to the history of the house. The Jennings want to sell the property, so we know that it's not their desire to preserve the history and donate to the city of Murfreesboro as a historical site. So we're kind of in that position going, what's the best mechanism we can do in order to protect the interests of the neighbors, preserve their character, their neighborhood? And their neighborhood's being threatened on all sides. I mean, it's no longer, it's an island, it's, it's a place, but, but it's not like something's not gonna happen. And that's the reality we have to face every day as planners, going, something's gonna happen. It's a matter of going, what's gonna happen, and what can we do to make sure to the best of your abilities that those things are met assurance-wise? But if it's a, if it's some kind of a, a business development, I think the same issues are gonna be prevalent in terms of it's not a, and I don't think the business community's gonna be respectful for that house either. I don't see that really in the program. I think we have a reason to preserve the house. I think it brings a lot of, I think it creates a unique property for their development. So I can say that just from, I'm not neutral in the position, but I am, I am kind of enamored by the process going, they've shown more concern, more passion for the historical essence of that house than I, than I was ever expecting. So I just want you to realize that. And as far as the buffer, we walked, that was my biggest concern from a grading standpoint. Can we respect their property line? And because the land is relatively flat, we don't feel like there's gonna be a lot of need to manipulate grade along that, but we do have a contradiction because they're, they wanted us to put some kind of privacy fence along the property line, and that would threaten that buffer. You know, we'd actually literally have to cut into the buffer to create some kind of a fence row. So we'll have to work with the staff to make sure that, that concession can be made. But I, I feel like everything we did was try to address the comments and the concerns they had originally. It was not to blindside them with a new plan. And obviously, there's not more density. I think it's a much better layout. And it was all to respect the house, respect the history, and respect, you know, the process as well. So again, I apologize if that felt like we were trying to get something over because that's not our intention at all. So with that, if there's any questions for me, I'm more than willing to answer anything I can. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? No, ma'am. Yeah. Okay, speaking of that, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And will now conduct, consider for passage on first reading ordinance, 150Z56 is on approximately 17.3 acres located along Manson Pike as residential multifamily RM-16 district and gateway design overlay GDO-1 simultaneous with annexation 2015-419 Hunter McDowell applicants.
Mayor McFarlane, I'm gonna try to make this short and sweet, I think. I know I'm gonna try to stay away from these things. Because of the sensitivity of this tract of land, and to start off, just to give you some background about me, I hope it helps. I worked for Milton Select for 33 years, on the Planning Commission for nine. So I've had not, not feel of these kind of, you know, meetings, public hearings, that kind of stuff, and I don't mean that ugly. I learned a whole lot from going through that particular process. In my mind, first of all, that property will be better suited as a planned residential development. I assume that all the utilities are gonna be underground if it's developed. I've been in the house one time, a long time ago. I'm, I'm really concerned about the maintenance, maintenance of the house, who's gonna, and preservation comes at a cost, and Gubbe's not gonna do it. So I can have, I have a lot of empathy for history. I was a history major. Honors, they didn't teach you. So I, I do respect history. Read it all the time. My wife would tell you. But there are just too many issues with this property on the geotechnical side, the caves. There are professional people out here that can address that if they have, have it already done it, I don't think, to the extent that I'm comfortable with. So that, too much, see it probably. I would love to see you all consider deferring this property and the development, kind of looking at doing, you know, to do what you can with the property to me, and plus, get back with these people and, and have a meeting if you decide to move forward. And, and give with them and, and make them understand what the intentions of course you're correct. Their property's not gonna stay. That property's not going to stay vacant forever. It's not going to stay the same forever. So keep that in your mind, and I'll be quiet.
Mr. Washington, is that a motion?
It is.
Before I do make a second.
Excuse me, what is the motion, Mr. Washington?
To defer.
Okay.
And let them, because they've heard all the comments and everything. If they want to move forward, that's fine. If you want to come back with something else, you know, if you do, you starting all over, and had to go back for the planning commission, and I, and I hate to put you in that position, but if this property wasn't so sensitive, I probably, I don't know what I'd do. But I do know I have to do what I think is the right thing, and in my opinion, I'm just one council member now, which passed by that place once a week for 20 years. Can hardly see it from the road, but it's back there. And I, and I do respect the interest and Mr. Jennings for, you know, it's his property, you know, he has the right to try to do what he can to, to us sell the property and move forward.
Mr. Schmutherman?
I'll, I'll follow up. I agree exactly with Ron. I'm just not comfortable with it, because we don't have a firm feeling of what really could be built on it, because of there being no geotechnical study done. You're kind of asking us to rezone it to multifamily, when we really don't know what kind of multifamily, we have no idea what kind of multifamily. I know when looking at the pictures, the presentation you gave tonight, there were the orange buildings and the yellow buildings. The yellow buildings run parallel with the neighborhoods. The orange ones, were those three stories?
All of the other buildings, except the yellow ones, were it going to be three stories?
And, and two of those buildings were directly on top of one of the residence homes. It, you know, I would like for us to see something that shows that if you're going to put a three-story building there, that there's no windows on that end, that the balconies are blocked, so that you're not looking down into that person's house. I mean, I, I, those, those two orange ones in the center there, they're looking right straight down into that residence, and that property is higher. I mean, I went out and walked it yesterday, and walked, walked far enough to find a cave in the chiggers. At the, and it's, it's, there's a lot to be seen there. There's a lot of history that we're concerned about, there's, there's a lot of geotechnical concerns, and I just don't think we're, I know when this came before the planning commission, there was not one word said about there being a house that was on this property that was built in 1820 or so. I think that was kind of deceptive, in a sense, to not even mention it. I mean, and then we keep seeing, well, I didn't mean to be deceptive, but I showed you one thing before, and now I'm showing you something else. So I certainly understand the neighborhood's concern of saying, what are you really saying, and what are you not being deceptive about? So I'll, I'll second the motion, and certainly, I think there's a whole lot of work that needs to be done in meetings as well, before we actually are going to be, or before I'm anywhere close to voting on this.
Mr. Rountree?
Just real quick, so is our option to defer and, and follow your leadership to go through a PRD process, is that what we can move forward with? Well, I can't speak for the council, but we do have a motion in a second for deferral. And this would just be deferring the entire property, so it wouldn't, I think you can garner from the council members what they're saying. From, from my standpoint, you know, I made a list here to say, it's contradictory to our land, Blackman Land Use Study that we, we have. There's a cemetery, two sinkholes, historic house, a neighborhood next door, drainage issues, and, you know, it's a 17-acre piece of property. And from a consistency standpoint, when you look at what we have done in the past, the McCullough property on 99 Boxwood, that had a historic home, that's a PRD. Merrimott Springs on Rucker Lane, that had an historic home, that was a PRD. So, you know, I, it seems like when there's these issues, there's, from my standpoint, I can't, if it came back to me at a bulk zoning, I would not be supportive personally as a bulk zoning. If this doesn't scream for a PRD, in my opinion, I don't know what, what a project would. So, but I don't even get a vote unless it's a tie, so. So we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion, it's for deferral.
Do you want to make it clear that this is, this is deferring the vote on the zoning? Is that right?
Yeah, this would be deferring the vote on the zoning. So we would be deferring the vote on the zoning, deferring, so.
That's right.
We have a motion in a second for deferral on the zoning of the property.
Mr. LaLance?
I vote to defer. Aye.
Mr. Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Schmutherman?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
We'll now hear from the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Chief on departmental update. Chief, let's give it maybe a couple of minutes for the room to clear out, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm glad to clear the floor.
I've been here about 10 weeks now.
10 weeks, okay.
So about two and a half months.
And so you, you get a departmental update right on the, on the baptism by fire, so.
I guess so. And I also want to welcome Craig here, because that makes me not the least senior department. So I very much so welcome him as well.
Craig will probably have legal next week, so.
He's here every week.
I was going to kind of give you an update on what's been going on about the past two and a half months. One, I've been trying to very much so focus on communication within our organization, and kind of identified very early on. I visited all the stations and talked to all the firefighters, and asked for their input on some surveys. One of the things that they really felt like was lacking was communication within the department. And so we kind of focused on making sure that that's better, sending regular emails and updates on situations, even from when we received our ISO rating, to the deployments that we've had, meetings that we have both internally and department, and city meetings as well, as well as the City Managers Weekly Report. We try to forward all those things out to all the employees. I think that's very much so helped increase that level of communication. We've also tried to increase the engagement with the, every employee at every level within the department in that timeframe. We've increased deployment of resources to our working fires, or to fires in general, any kind of a structure fire that's called in. We've actually, on the initial alarm, increased the amount of resources that we're sending to that. I felt like that was a very weak point that I found within the first couple of weeks that I was here. So we, we started sending an extra engine company to both residential and commercial reports of structure fires. Come to find out, once we received our ISO report back, that's one of our areas that we were very deficient in. We lost a lot of personnel points, because we were not sending the appropriate amount of folks to, or appropriate amount of companies to those fires. So that was probably a good move going forward with ISO as well. We've been training on some of the latest firefighting research and tactics. We've had some classes taught by the Tennessee Fire and Code Academy. We've been doing training at Franklin Heights Development, and utilizing that resource while we have it available to us to do training. So we've been doing a lot of that. And as I mentioned earlier, we've received our ISO grading in the last few weeks as well. That was done prior to me coming here. The grading was actually conducted prior to me coming here, but I've already touched base with our community risk manager with ISO, and spoken with him about some of the things we've already put in place, as far as the sending more companies on our initial deployments, to upgrading other things. And one of the things that's really going to help us out a lot there is the public safety training facility. Getting that underway, it's going to add a lot of points and value to the ISO grading as well. Some of the short-term projects that we have going on, or goals that we have going on, we're getting ready to do some promotions within the next couple of months. We already have two positions posted, and we're going to be posting approximately four additional positions besides that, within the department, multiple promotions in the next few weeks. One of the things we're looking at to also enhance both training and communications within the department is installing the video conferencing center, or system. We are working with IT, Bill Terry, our IT representative, has actually ordered some cameras already, but we're looking to put video conferencing equipment in our fire stations. That does several things for us. Number one, it increases the amount of time that we can go live with our personnel in training situations and scenarios, but at the same time, it leaves them in the response zone. We don't have to pull them in for training to one centralized location when it's a dyed electric-based class. We can pull them, we can do that at the stations. It saves fuel mileage and wear and tear on the trucks as well, by leaving them in the stations to do that training. But it's going to really help us enhance our communications overall throughout the department. We can conduct shift meetings and get words out on information and policies and practices that are going on via the video conferencing system, and do it one time, so everybody gets the same information. Again, I'll mention the public safety training facility. Getting that underway is a, is a big project, and it's something that we need to desperately do, both to help our ISO rating, but also increase the amount of practical training that we can do, fire, rescue-wise, hazardous materials-wise, and otherwise. We're going to increase the usage of and the efficiency of the records management system. I think we've had the records management system that we have now, along with the upgrades that have come along with it for about the last 11 years. I feel like that it's very underutilized. We're utilizing probably 10 to 15% of the breadth of that program, and I think we're going to increase the usage of it dramatically over the next few weeks. Everything from inventorying to our training records, to a lot of other things going into that system, that'll centralize the data for our entire department, and reduce a lot of that paperwork that we're having, issues we're having with paperwork, and keeping up with that paperwork for everything, from audits on our training records, from the State Fire Commission, to other things. We're looking to do some leadership development for all supervisory levels in the very, in the very short term. Probably in January, we're going to start with the captains and shift commanders doing some leadership training. I've identified that as kind of a weakness that we've had, leadership development. That's one of the things our employees ask for, very much so is additional training within officer-based training and leadership training. As I mentioned the other night, we're going to develop information on Station 10 at the Capitol Improvement Meeting, develop information on Station 10, to get accurate information to both the city management team, as well as the city council, on the needs to either staff that station, or if we don't need to staff that station, whatever comes out of the results of that. We're also looking to enhance, over the next one to five years, our EMS training and service delivery. One of the promotional positions that we are promoting is a training coordinator that is specific to the EMS division. We're looking to put a person in that that can enhance the delivery of EMS training to all of our personnel, and deliver more of our training, our continuing education training within the department, so we don't have to outsource that to other places. We're going to be updating general orders, standard operating guidelines, job descriptions, and promotional processes within the next bit of time as well. We're also looking to build a relationship with stakeholders and identify the way, ways that the department can help and be involved in the needs of stakeholders in ways that we're not currently involved now. And we mentioned some of this stuff as we were talking about the contract with the Veterans Administration, about different things that we can do for our stakeholders, our businesses or otherwise. Everything from offering CPR training, to fire extinguisher training, and other resources that we can offer at a much reduced cost to our industry as a service of the fire department. We are also looking to restructure and improve some of our fire prevention and public education programs, including, I've talked to Dr. Gilbert already, and we're going to enter a partnership with the city schools, and actually get our personnel into the schools a lot more often, both for public fire education and injury prevention to our children, but also applying the math, the science, and the engineering that we use on our, on a daily basis in the fire service, applying that for the kids, to where they can see that, and it becomes active for them, and it becomes real life. So we're very encouraged by that partnership, and we're looking forward to getting that underway very soon. Some of the mid-range goals that we have are, we're looking to attain accreditation for our hazardous materials team. This is something that is done through TIMA. We have a team now that is likely capable of being accredited. We just need to pull some things together, and get, and get with TIMA and seek that process. We are also looking to accredit our technical rescue teams through TIMA. They are just on the, they are not ready for that process yet at TIMA. They're just now beginning that process of accrediting what they call urban search and rescue teams across the state. They're working with the largest group of cities in the state, the tri-cities area, Johnson City and Kingsport have kind of combined to form a team there, but they're working with the four larger cities, and Kingsport and Johnson City right now, to develop the criteria for those teams and that accreditation process. So immediately after they get that involved, we will be pursuing accreditation of our technical rescue teams as well. As we mentioned at CIP the other night, we're also looking mid-range to do relocation of Station 4, as well as the buildings of Station 10 and 11. Joby Jones Parkway, I mean, for Station 11 and 12. Joby Jones Parkway for Station 11, and the Blackman area for Station 12. And then, one of the things that I would like to pursue within the next, it'll likely take us three to five years, is accreditation at the departmental level. This accreditation is done through the Center of Public Safety Excellence Accreditation Program, which is administered underneath the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. And there are several things that it would do for us. It would better enable us to determine our community risk and safety needs, develop community-specific standards of cover, what we need in our community to provide better services, evaluate the performance of our department, and it will establish a method for achieving continuous organizational improvement as well, through that accreditation process. And we're wanting to pursue that soon. And some of our long-range goals are, of course, to continue to enhance service delivery to the citizens and visitors of Murfreesboro, and also strategically plan for the city's growth and needs for the future. We're very interested in the 2035 plan, and we're keeping an eye on that, especially the land use mechanism of that, and where our citizens are going to be that need services for us, and what our, what our land areas are, what are locating there, because it makes a huge difference to us, depending on what it is, residential, commercial, or otherwise. So we're looking to keep that, that going. What I've found since I've been here is that we've got a very good fire department. I want us to be a great fire department. I want us to be a fire department that, when somebody says, we need to know how to do something, from any of the fire department across the state, or the southeast, or even the country, that they come to Murfreesboro and say, "Well, what's Murfreesboro doing?" Because that's what we need to be doing. That's my goal. Do you have any questions?
We've got a fantastic fire department. We're awfully proud of you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm very proud of our personnel. We've got great personnel, and we're looking to build on that.
We're proud you're here.
Thank you.
All right.
Shane?
Yes.
Can I have something? Can I back up one, one step, just to make sure, I know where we are on the last item that we just went through, the annexation slash zoning?
Yes, sir.
So, we've annexed that piece of property, and we have, we have, we voted on annexing, and we said yes, but then it doesn't happen?
Correct.
Okay.
We have set this up deliberately for an event such as this. The plan of services is to become effective when the zoning, I'm sorry, when the annexation becomes effective. The annexation, however, is to become effective when the zoning becomes effective. Now, the applicant could come back and say, "Go ahead and make my annexation effective." I don't expect that. In some situations, they might. But the annexation's not going to be effective. It's like the first one we did, where that, that annexation was recommended by Planning Commission back in January, and it wasn't taken up by council until tonight. And council did approve the zoning.
Yeah.
So when the zoning is actually effective 15 days after third reading, is when the annexation will be effective. Because although you've approved that zoning on first reading tonight, something could come up.
I see.
So it rarely does, but it has in the past.
So that's somewhere in the application process? I mean, you know, as far as what we see on here, it looks like it's...
It's the way the documents are structured.
Okay.
Right.
All right. Just want to make sure.
And I want to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
If that, if we go through the PRD process, does that go back to planning?
Yes, it does.
So...
It has to.
It has to, that's what I was thinking.
Yes, so if they can come back to you with another request to approve the RM 16 zoning, I wouldn't expect that, given that you've indicated fairly strongly that that is not going to be approved. And I would expect them to go back and reevaluate and decide whether they want to just walk this deal, or if they think the whole thing is worth them putting together a plan development application. Obviously, that not only takes more time, it takes a lot more money.
Right.
And the other problem, and a problem with this property that anybody would face, and it's just a real problem, is how much can you invest in geotechnical studies and in structural engineer analysis of the house? I mean, I guess someone's living in the house, so making... I mean, I guess someone's living in the house, so making it so that someone can continue to live in it is probably not too big a problem. Making it a group assembly, which would either require sprinkling or perhaps, or some other kind of fire prevention, something equivalent to sprinkling, a lot, a lot higher burden. And, and it's going to take some time and some money for anyone to determine whether that can, that can happen. And I don't, you know, I don't know what they're looking at for buying the property. I don't know anything about that, but they have now a substantially more expensive project before they turn their spade to dirt than they had anticipated.
That's right. That's right. All right. Thanks. I just wanted to make sure. I didn't know if we needed to do something...
The annexation is not going to be effective. If they decide to come with a plan development, that has to start again at Planning Commission.
David, on items E and D, it uses the terminology down here simultaneous with annexation.
Right.
Being as we passed the annexation, would it not come up on a second and third reading at this point, being as we approved it? Or should, should we in the future put simult- simultaneous with zoning?
Zoning.
Zoning under the annexation part, so that, so that they go in together, i- is my point.
Well, of course, this is zoning. You know, item E is zoning.
Right. I'm talking about when we annexed up there at the top...
I guess we can't do that.
That we approved. We approved the annexation. When we approved that, shouldn't that said simultaneous with zoning? So that they kind of...
One goes into the... Councilmember?
It pairs them together, I guess.
If the resolution that you passed is contingent upon the zoning passing, so Section 2 of that resolution makes the resolution effective only upon approval of zoning. So now that zoning's been deferred, the effective, effectiveness of the resolution for the annexation is now deferred.
Is deferred.
Okay. So it's, is that something that's in here or something that's in...
It's not in there. It's in the resolution.
Yeah. Yeah. Right. That's the difference.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which one do we have?
Thank you, Scott Lee.
Yes.
Okay.
It doesn't say anything about that.
Which one is this?
This is Section 2. This is Section 1, and then Section 3, or Section 2.
Okay. I think what would be good, Mr. Ives, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Tindall, just give us...
We'll put together another outline of it.
Yeah. Have you got it, Mr. Tindall?
Effective date of, this resolution's effective of the annexation.
15 RA 56.
Page 282 of your electronic packet, it is clear that it's...
Section 2, the resolution shall take effect upon the effective date of the zoning ordinance with respect to the annexed area. And it's like the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, that's exactly the verbiage I was looking for, and I didn't see it in the...
282.
It's not in that first one. It's in the next one.
Okay. Effective on the date of the zoning ordinance. Good. Great. Fantastic. Yeah. It is in the documentation, and it's not as clear from the, the agenda wording. And we can, we'll, we'll fix that, hopefully. We'll try to fix that.
It was about as clear as how cow poo cave was yesterday.
Right.
Cow crap cave. I'm sorry.
Craft cave, yeah. That's officially.
Okay. Well, now reluctantly consider recommendations of the city engineer with two change orders.
Hopefully these will be a little bit simpler. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. I do have two items for you tonight. The first item's a change order to our annual concrete and storm drainage contract. The original contract, we, we consist of insulation improvements to sidewalks, curbs, and gutters, handicap ramps, storm drainage pipes, et cetera. The original contract did not include any unit, unit items for seal coating or restriping of parking lots, and that has, as you can imagine, has become an increasing need with at city facilities to both help their overall performance and increase their longevity. We do have a price from Rollins Excavating to increase the contract amount by $15,100 to a total contract amount of $1,200,820.00. Staff recommends approval of the change order to the contract in the amount of $15,100. I might add that we've priced this out based on about four average, we've, of course, we've got unit prices in, in here, but we, we feel like the, the increase in the amount was, was for about four average-sized parking lots. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Griffith?
Rick, are you not confused at all by that? I'm trying to come up with something to ask, but I completely understand that. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, recall the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Second item is change order number one to the Veterans Parkway Phase 2B construction contract. Rollins is excavating, is finishing that, that project up, and we should have substantial completion by the end of this, this calendar year. During the construction of the, the project, CUD determined that there was about a 4,000 feet near the center line of the proposed roadway that their 30-inch water line needed a no-blast zone. This was a water line that was, was constructed about four to five years ago prior to the, to the Veterans Parkway project being completed. We did work with CUD before the project started and, and thought that, that we had had the nuances worked out with them, but they, this was something that they added actually after the, after the contract had, had already started. Due to that, Rollins had to use a pneumatic hammer in order to install about 2,725 feet of storm sewer, and consequently, they've asked for a $291,940 increase to their contract plus an additional 74 days added to the contract. Our consultant, Wiser Company, has reviewed this and has agreed that Rollins is due this additional cost. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Griffith.
Ms. Wright, beer permits?
Item number 10.
Oh, I'm sorry. Consider recommendations of the solid waste director. Approve the grant contract between the State of Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation and the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee.
Yes, sir. It's surprising that we did not think that this was going to be happening until January, but the state has seen fit to award us, right now, a contract to go into, we come to you about September, about the composting grant, and the state is trying to increase the, I guess, allow the city and the county to work together so that we can start looking at ways of decreasing waste, because that is what we're going to be looking at here in the future. And this grant sort of allows us to start, I guess baby steps is the best way of putting it, of us learning how to best start handling a different waste stream than we normally do in a different manner. Food waste is going to be one of the bigger banks for the buck when we start looking at ways to diverting tonnages from the landfill. And this right here, we'll be starting at, at our 4765 Florence Road location, because we have the wood waste, the county has the transportation, because they're picking up the schools, and we're going to be looking at trying to start out from a, from a small step and working our way up. The physical impact is part of what we did in the CIP Monday night, was put part of the grant funding in there, because it is a 50/50 grant. We have to buy the equipment, and then the state reimburses for our, their 50%, and that was part of the new tub grinder, or baby hogzilla, or a hogzilla 1 and 2, loader, and a trummel screen and all that. And the solid waste department, I know that Mac Nolan presented it to the Public Works last night, they're part of the grant, and, and he will be presenting it to the full county commission Tuesday night, just so that, and that's my recommendation, that we accept the grant and learn how to start looking at how we going to develop ways of, of changing our, our trash culture. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions that you may have.
What's the split between the county and the city and that, our portion of the grant application? What's the split?
Well, the county is basically going to be purchasing a vehicle, a front-end loader truck, and lock bars for all of the schools, and be putting those on for the county and the city schools. Basically, the biggest part of it, and that's the reason why we are the grantor, is because we're like $1.1 million of the total, or my Alabama math is a little bit off, but we're probably about almost $900,000, because there's about 150, or 60, the 169,000 is probably about the part of the county.
Joy, are there any strings attached to it as far as it would extend any other items that we deal with relative to the state?
Well, the, the strings attached to it are going to be, one, as, as Paul Harvey used to say, and now the rest of the story, there's a lot of work involved. One, it is almost going to be like a dual track, because we're going to have to go and apply for a permit, as you see in here, that we'll probably be doing a public hearing, because the new grant, or the new, the definition for the composting is, is going to become a solid waste processing facility. And that, you know, your public hearing tonight was interesting, but when you start saying solid waste processing facility for that, it will be real good, because they love landfills, or just even the connotation of doing something different. But that is the way the state puts the definition in there, and we will be going through the process. Sam Huddleston and I have worked with Jim, and we were sitting down looking at doing it. There's a $1,000 fee for us to just apply for the, just to apply for the, for the license or the permit, and then the state has 120 days review process. They have a 90-day window where a subject or a person can come up and request a public hearing with them. And we also will be developing a, a whole standard of operating procedures of how to, we're going to run the facility that has to go and be reviewed by the state. And also, any equipment that we do, our purchase, before we can do that, we have to do the specifications. The state has to approve the specifications, and then we put it down to our new purchasing, where they go through the specifications. So it's going to be, if we were to start January with all the stuff, we would probably not even be looking at our first little part of food waste or anything out at the facility until probably October, November of next year. That's how long it's going to take us to get all of the...
Ask it, ask it a different way. Is the grant money going to cover all the costs of doing whatever we have to do?
Well, the grant cover, the grant will not cover everything. It's going to cover most of the equipment, 50% of the equipment, but when you start putting in a windrow turner, just the time involved and all that, no, sir.
Okay. So are the other costs associated with this, are they covered in the budget, your operating budget, or...
Well, they're covered in the operating budget, and some of it's going to not be into the operating budget until, what, 2017, '18, because just the way that it's going to run. It's a five-year grant, and so we're going to be looking at just getting all the stuff involved, because there is going to be another personnel, person involved, just because of the, the equipment and what we're going to be doing.
Part of what I'm wondering about here, and I don't mean to beat on this, but I guess what I'm curious of is, you know, with us only being 3% of the waste that goes into the landfill, I mean, how much food can we really compost, and what kind of fiscal impact is this going to have on, on the city two years, three years, four years, five years?
Actually, the fact of the matter is, if you look at it, as far as doing this grant, it doesn't, as far as if you just want the, the assessment, we have zero disposal cost. What we're doing is taking material out from the landfill and trying to make it into a different product and being, working it into it. But, so it's not going, it's not, if you really want the, my opinion, when I put it into the grant, I said it does not make economic sense for us to do this, because we're actually taking material that we're already getting free disposal, and we're going to be looking at it doing that way. But is this the right thing to do? Yes, sir, because we're going to be learning and we're going to be moving that way here in the next eight to 10 years anyway.
I'm kind of, I guess I'm kind of okay with what you say as far as learning, and ultimately, when we do have our own thing eight to 10 years from now, we're going to need to have this figured out.
Yes, sir.
So I certainly understand that part. I guess I, I would, I would like to know what the impact is to our budget to do this, you know, other than just saying we're going to take a grant for 1.1 million or whatever it turns out to be, whether it's down the road, I mean, some kind of pro forma, would that make sense? To know what that is?
Yes, sir.
Pro forma?
Okay.
Or return on investment? Should we defer this? Do we know? Or do we know?
Joy, after the grant, after the grant has come and gone, you've implied here that we can't do it with our current staff and manpower, that there's going to be additional employees needed. So we're going to add employees for the educational part of it, I guess, with the assumption that it's not going to cost us a thing to continue putting it in the landfill, right? If we don't do this.
Right. I mean, we're not even picking it up now. The county is the one picking up the waste stream.
Unless you guys feel it really strongly about this, I mean, I, I think we ought to move to defer it, and maybe we'll get a little bit more information, and before we, before we accept it, start something that, like this.
We'll get something in your, your packet for your, your next, next meeting. I'll be glad to get you some more information.
All right. I'll make that in the form of a motion then, right?
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, recall the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Any statements to be paid?
Not tonight.
Okay. Any other business... our, our landfill and solid waste opportunities moving forward. So, really thank y'all for taking extra time and doing that. Go Tigers. Okay. Your permits?
Mayor, we have one tonight. This is a ownership change and will be a name change for a convenience store at 1722 South Rutherford Boulevard, Suite C. The background check does meet the city's requirements for that, and we are still waiting for them to finish building codes inspections. So, at this point, I recommend an approval once they complete their building codes inspections. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Yes, sir, it is.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Young.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Any statements to be paid?
Not tonight.
Okay. Any other business from the staff or the city council? The New Year's Day Murfreesboro 5K became live today for registration. So, those of y'all who, it's a, it's a run or a walk, Mr. LaLance, so if you want to register for that. Just because I ask questions? No, I'm just saying, you say, you say you don't like to run, so I'm saying it's a walk, so we're, we're excited. See you tonight, we'll stand adjourned.